Awesome, okay, it's seven o'clock, six o'clock. Thank you. Call this meeting of the Hillsborough Planning Commission to order. Judy, would you like to take the role, please? I'll let you first say, welcome to Frank, our new member.
There you go. Reed.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Doden.
Here.
Stiles.
Here.
Also present is Planner Denise Swinger. Soon to be here at any second is Village Solicitor Chris Connerd, and we're also looking for Rose Pelzal to be here at any moment.
All right, thanks. We have an agenda in front of us. Three public hearings, one for the fire station, one for a replat in the CBE, and then the third is for the conditional use for the Cresco labs. So first, any additions to that? Anybody want to add anything? Someone's trying to call me, someone's on my phone. Even though it's still vibrate.
Before you do that, I also want to thank Chris Sabogen for her service as awesome as she did send in a letter of resignation. But we do appreciate her service while she was with us in planning.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jerry, for that. And Jerry, this may be one of your last meetings, so thanks for your engagement.
He's got one more.
Are we going to meet next month?
Yes. Sorry.
Take that all back.
Okay. Disregard that.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is review of the meeting minutes from last month, actually from August.
Or else I just forgot to change the darn date.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Those are actually September 24.
Yeah, okay.
They are September.
So that's my correction.
There you go.
Anyone have any changes or questions on page one? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? Or page six? Motion to approve these minutes.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And I'm going to put that as a three to nothing because Stiles, Sims, and Reed were present. That will keep it simpler, but thank you anyway, Frank.
Okay. Sorry, you don't look all roles on that phone, don't you?
What's that?
You don't really call the role when you do that.
No, you just voice sort of a, I mean, if anyone knew at the table wouldn't have the biggest idea what the heck that all meant, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, so next is communications. Do we have any communications other than for the individual items? I don't think we do.
Did everyone get the invitation to come to the December meeting of the Regional Planning Commission Workshop at Sinclair?
Yes.
Because that's an excellent, I think, stop, so.
I don't think I did.
You probably did not because you weren't in the club yet. I will send it to you.
Okay. All right, next item is council report. Jerry, do you have anything?
I don't think so. Do you remember anything?
Transient gas lodging.
Transient gas lodging.
Yeah.
Right. But they're working, council's working. Did they send it back to us again?
What council decided temporarily because of the lodging tax that's going into effect January 1 is to go ahead at this time and make that just a permitted use, and then we're going to revisit it and have a little bit more discussion about it.
Next year.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is a time, if you have anything to address the planning commission about, it's not only the agenda, there'll be public comment time on each of the public hearings, but if there's something that's not pertaining to the public hearings, if anyone has anything to say here, please step forward. And if not, then we'll go to the first public hearing. The first public hearing is for the fire station conditional use and site plan review. Denise, do you want to say a few words about your review?
Okay.
And then we can hear from...
From the representatives. This is in Residential C, our high-density residential district, and it also crosses into Residential B, moderate-density residential. And the reason for this is because it is actually a total of 11 lots that Miami Township trustees purchased from Wright State University. It is the former location of Wright State University Physicians Clinic, which was demolished in 2000, sometime around 2010. Since being purchased by the Miami Township trustees, the property contains a little shy of three acres, and it is, they are applying for a conditional use permit as well as a site plan review tonight for that. Now, I could just go ahead and, we can kind of go one by one maybe on some of the particulars of the setbacks. I think for the most part, they do meet all of the, most of the requirements for that, but I thought maybe they could, maybe someone could stand up and just talk about.
Yeah, someone from the township wants to come forward, kind of describe your, the project and the reasoning and... Don't all jump up at once.
Somebody has to.
Yeah, identify yourself for the folks out there.
Okay, my name is Nestor Malnich. I'm a principal at MSA Architects, and we've been working with Miami Township for quite a while on the planning of this fire facility through when the property was acquired and then the levy that had just passed in order to construct the facility. So we've been working with them on this. So the fire facility is going to replace what is on Corey Street right now, also house some of the offices for the township. It's a multi-base station, be a new headquarters, up-to-date, state-of-the-art facility for the fire. It is bound by Dayton-Zenia Road and Marshall and Herman Streets. So as you noted, this is the site of the former Wright State Physicians offices. One-story facility, we're looking at constructing this as a facility that's going to last, so we're looking at a 35 to 50-year facility. Masonry exterior with some synthetic wood siding, metal roofs, lots of glass, daylight, really trying to make it kind of low-key with the slope roof, kind of settle in and nestle in with the neighborhood there, knowing it's a residential neighborhood. We didn't want a lot of tall structures, towers, things like that, so we're really trying to kind of work with the site and with the adjoining site conditions to make that work. The facility will primarily be fronting facing west, so facing Dayton-Zenia Road. It'll have an access drive on the east side that'll cut through north to south, so all of the fire apparatus will be discharging facility to the west, so onto Dayton-Zenia Road, and then heading to their altar service from that direction, and then they'll be returning from the rear 69 old altar station. The apparatus bays are going to be oriented, and we're towards the north of the site, to the south of the site is where the offices, living quarters, day room, township offices, training, and all of that from the public entrance, the main entrance will be from the south side of the site. So as I mentioned, there'll be an access to Dayton-Zenia Road to the west, that'll be a apron discharging from the apparatus base. There'll be an entrance drive from south, which will be the return entrance for vehicles, and then also the entrance for public parking, visitor parking, employee parking, and to connect that to the north as well, just so you have a bypass for people, vehicles can access through that way.
Am I correct in that in most cases, unless it's a major emergency, that the sirens and lights won't be turned on until they actually get on? Does that change? Okay.
The revised code stipulates that when, well, first off, when we do have some designation for EMS calls that are non-emergent calls, when those are coded that way, then those are non-emergency responses. Any additional ones, the revised code is very clear that.
Okay, so it's just, it's just an EMS that's not...
There's some common sense fire things, you know, if you call for like the carbon oxide check and nobody is ill, we're not going to go licensed.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So there's some common sense things.
Gotcha, okay.
Jerry, they've laid out this, the distinctions in this.
Yeah, that's what I saw, but I just wanted to say, because there's been some concern about noise and...
Any questions?
The, I have a couple. One was about the retention basin, as, and I think Mike Hein said that he might have that done before the meeting, but...
Yeah, that, he's still, he's still working on that. And Cresco, I'm sorry, not Cresco. Do you have your storm water people here from?
We do not.
Okay.
I know the site is designed to bring to the east, and we're looking to incorporate as much natural grain into the pan with some bio swales along the east property line. We're probably going to bid as an alternate depending on what the percolation rates are. We're actually looking at doing some dry wells, so that we can actually retain as much of that water and go back if it off first possible.
I know that Mike was actually asking for that information as of like Friday or this morning, maybe, some more of that.
Well, we, those calculations were all since last Thursday or Friday.
He was asking for some additional information based on that, yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, so it's, and it's fine, I mean, you know, this conditional use here is going to be based on his final report.
Okay.
I think he had some concern about the number of trees.
Trees, trees that were...
In the vegetation in the basin.
In the basin itself.
Said some of them would be okay, but too many might cause a problem for...
And I guess one other, I guess that's for you Denise, I'm sorry I didn't get to you earlier, it had to do with, one of the driveways was too long, you talked about.
I'm going to have Chris address that. The driveways typically are, zoning code says 30 feet width, and it didn't identify that I could see, but Chris said there is a section under essential services, and he's going to address that to maybe avoid a variance for that.
Yeah.
Okay, and one, I apologize, there was some miscommunication between my office and Denise when the question came up of whether or not a variance was needed. Under 1260.04B, there's a definition of essential services which are exempt from the zoning code, and the 1284.04, essential services includes accessories to a use. So the exception to the exception is buildings or wireless service facilities. We're not talking about a building here, we're talking about a driveway, which is an accessory to the use of the building. So therefore, we don't think that a variance is necessary because it's exempt from the zoning code.
Gotcha, okay.
So that means that the wide driveway on Zenia would not need to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals? Okay.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. There's a long discussion about parking and that kind of thing, but I didn't see any notations anywhere about bike racks. Is there any planned there? I know a lot of the folks responding, obviously, the fire department's not going to want to do that, but people coming to township meetings may, and it might be, it might make sense to add a few bike racks.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we did show any on the plans as we now, but we have talked about that.
Okay, I mean, you guys have bikes too.
I'll leave my tracks.
Yeah, yeah, and I had another question. I didn't see any screening on the dumpster area. Could there be some kind of provision for that, just so the people that live there on Marshall are not looking out the front door to the dumpster? I mean, I think that's just kind of a neighborly thing. And it may actually be in there, I just didn't see that it was included. I'm not sure if that's shown on the, on the drawing right now.
I think that may, yeah, that's possible. Whether, I don't know if the zoning code has stipulation on what kind of screening, whether it's fencing, wood fencing, or landscape, I would assume that if you wood fencing right, can't see the eyes.
Right.
We have, yeah, we have some provisions on fencing, but we also have some recommended types of screening that you can do. It's actually in the planning section of the code, so that's why you not noticed it.
And I have one more, I'm going to direct this to the trustees. I was looking at your conference rooms. How do they compare in size to the one that you presently have in terms of more public interest now that you're closer to town in your meetings and so forth? I'm just curious.
Your, the conference rooms that are called out on the specifications now are, don't exist, can exist in the facility now.
Okay.
They have that one training room.
Right, which is a multipurpose.
And the one that's called out in the new facility is about, not quite twice that size, but in addition to that are two small conference rooms, one for the fire and one for the township administration.
Right.
Basically 15 by 15 rooms, they're meant to be meeting for zoning commission, VCA, and the like.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. At this point, it's, it has not been made into one lot, it's 11 lots, but you're going to be making it one lot.
Yeah, the consolidation is in progress, and the attorneys have been emailing back and forth and getting information to them, so I'm not sure whether it is in progress or not. It's done next week, but it's consolidated to one parcel.
One of the things you may notice, because this property abuts both Marshall Street and Herman Street, it actually has three front lot lines, so that is the reason for why there's a 20-foot setback on both Marshall Street and Herman Street as well, and the future expansion does not go out, stays within that setback. But what, can you talk a little bit about what that future expansion is?
Yes. We tried to design the facility, the planning of the facility for a long time, and we were looking to have an additional bay, so we looked at the budget and the cost value of that, so we determined to reduce it by that one bay, but we want to provide the opportunity that down the road, I mean, I don't know, any of that's 10, 15, 20, 25 years from now, but down the road, if another bay needs to be added, it would be a little bit smaller, lower in scale, so the apartment would have to look at what types of apparatus to go in there. You certainly wouldn't bring a ladder truck over there, because it would be pretty racist and whatnot, but maybe some rearrangement of vehicle, if additional vehicles need to be purchased, additional apparatus, we'd have additional apparatus.
Okay.
Then typically, you have to have, like, show a loading and unloading area, I mean, are you, were you considering that as your own front area for your fire trucks? I mean, typically, loading, unloading area, excuse me, would be like for deliveries of things that are coming to your building?
Yeah, they're always coming to the apparatus.
They do that in the apparatus case, okay.
Where do you stand with your discussions with the neighbors, the folks on?
We're meeting with the neighbors at 7:30.
Oh, okay. Have you started those conversations? Have you heard anything?
There have been an assortment of conversations here and there, not necessarily anything super formal like this evening, but for the most part, any kind of negative comments have been pretty minimal and actually are pretty good for us. I think the biggest concern we really have heard is mostly sound and light.
Shocking.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I mean, actually, there aren't that many neighbors, really, there's just a few on Marshall and the apartments across Zenia. And friends care, but you spend more time there than you do anywhere else, probably.
Friends' care won't be, that's not going to really be a problem, at least wise, if the sirens are pointing their direction, that's where we're going anyway.
Right, right.
If relatively, if you talk to our existing neighbors who live right across the street from the fire station, they don't have any noise complaints. You know, in fact, they wrote a letter in the paper about it, and we got used to it.
Yeah. Any other questions for them? Okay.
Any questions about the vision, or any...
Yeah, I'm assuming that John, you've looked at this from the water and the wastewater side?
Water and the electric.
And electric? Have we looked at it from the wastewater?
Yes.
Have we? Okay, and you guys don't have any concerns? Okay. Okay, well, thanks. Denise, do you have anything else you want to add?
Let's see here, just that I would request that the condition be that we get the final stormwater right off from engineer.
Oh, yep, in just about one second, we're going to do that. Okay, so you want the stormwater, okay. Okay, well, there's no more questions for Denise or the applicant, then what we'll do is we're going to open the public hearing, and so if anyone wants to address any aspect of this, feel free to come forward, identify yourself, and let us know your thoughts.
I'm Linda Potter, and I live right behind where the new firehouse is on Herman. It's the first house on Herman Street.
Okay.
And my only concern, which I think I've stressed before, is light pollution. That's, you know, I mean, sound, you can get used to that, but the light is my only concern, so I don't know what is planned or, you know, the pushes or where there's a bear in there between our home and the firehouse.
Okay. Denise, do you know the answer to that?
Well, I typically, the light poles, I believe, are not as tall, they're not very tall, and maybe you can address that, the lighting plan. I did put something in there.
I believe the maximum, how do you think?
Dan, can you come up and...
I believe the maximum, my, the light poles is 20 feet, if I'm not mistaken, and that's what we were planning on doing along the south. I believe we, I think we only have one light pole there we're currently planning on providing, and that would be aimed toward the interior to site away from the street.
Some of the southeast?
The, that would be on the south end of the lot, at the apartment area, just off the apartment.
Okay.
So it would be aimed into the site. Currently, we're looking at, that's the lights along the drive that connects Herman to Marshall. Other site lighting would be light ballards by the main entrance, basically, so you're talking, you know, three-foot tall baller that shines down the, on the...
Can I get your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Sam, I'm at MSA Architects.
So Dan, on the site landscape plan, you show future trees and shrubs along the east border of the site. Is that near future, distant future?
It's funny, as the, as the, as the base of the site developed, as residential, we probably try to...
Right, there's still vacant property there. Yeah, okay. Have you seen the lighting plans or the site layout?
When I'm going at 7:30.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good.
And we have a picture of the light, and you have, you have...
I don't think we do.
But does it, does it shine now, is the whole light shining?
It does, it's all...
And if I'm correct, your interior lighting is set so it comes off and on and...
Yeah, in the evening, we expect the light monitors up at the top, just windows, we're expecting that to be a low level of light, just a little bit of a glow that you might see coming out of those.
Actually, I'll add to that, I just want to confirm with Danny. When we were at the planning meetings, they were even suggesting that the night lighting, so, you know, there's going to be some lighting that's going to be on 24/7 in the facility, but the night lighting would even be red lights, which is less intrusive and less visually disturbing, and that's not, I mean, it wasn't really a concern for the, it wasn't done primarily for the neighbors, but it was done more from a firefighter's standpoint, but we thought that's a good, good way to address that, as you all know, that the red light at night is going to be a little less, a little bit easier on the eye to just having white light inside the building for the night lighting.
Yeah.
And then all the exterior lighting out will be cut off fixtures, always trying to aim the lighting to the interior of the site, and on the north side, you're on the south side, right? Yeah, so on the north side, we don't have, we don't have any site lighting or drive running to the north, we go to the parking lot, the colored parking lot to the south, but again, if that light fixture is on the south side of the lot shining north, if, you know, you're still, if you look out the window, you're going to see a lit parking lot, there's not going to be any in your direction when you're on the south side.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else have any comments, any questions they'd like to address? Okay, well, if that's the case, then I'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion back up here. Susan, Frank, Jerry, we have anything else?
Well, I just want to be clear, so the storm water management plan is not done yet, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so that, if we would approve something, it's going to be conditional upon having that approved by the village engineer.
Right.
And also conditional upon the replat.
Yeah, assuming that that goes forward. But really, I mean, that's not really even our bailiwick.
Okay, and then it's also conditional upon a, okay, and we, a variance is not needed for the driveway, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not an issue anymore.
So, I think if we approve this today, what we do is make it conditional on storm water plan, but I would also like to see conditional upon the bike rack and dumpster screens that can be worked out between Denise and the applicant. Is there anything else that we want to see as a condition of approval?
I just want to make sure that it's okay as far as the overhead doors facing Zena Avenue, that's, oh, again, it's essential services, so kind of...
Yeah, I mean, that was really the only way to do it, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
It doesn't make sense for them to be on Herman or Marshall.
During construction, do you plan on having a fence around the construction area? How do you plan on keeping wandering feet and eyes out of?
Safety and security, though, I mean, the contractor doesn't do any work.
Okay, okay.
And usually they'll secure the site what, you know, as appropriate, if it's just earthwork and there are no holes in the ground, they're probably going to fence the whole site, but I'm sure they're going to secure any excavation or the building if it's not enclosed.
Okay.
Okay. We want to put together a motion here to...
Sure, I will. I'm going to just pretty much use Denise's language, I think. Approval of a conditional use of the site plan for the new Miami Township Fire Station and Miami Township Offices, allowing for overhead doors facing Zena Avenue with the following conditions. One, an approved storm water management plan by the village engineer. Two, a replat of the property reducing the 11 lots to one. Three, screening of the dumpster. And four, bike racks.
Second?
Second. Judy, you have that?
I think I've got it.
You want to read it back to us?
I do.
This is a once-in-a-50-year-deal right here.
So the motion is to approve the conditional use and site plan review for the new Miami Township Fire Station and Miami Township Offices, allowing for the overhead doors facing Zena Avenue with the following conditions. One, an approved storm water management plan by the village's engineer. Two, a replat of the property reducing 11 lots to one. Three, screening of... three, screening of the dumpster area; and four, bike racks.
You want to say to be worked out with the?
Um, do you say all conditions to be worked out with village staff?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sims, were you the second on that? I'm sorry.
Um.
Frank.
Frank.
Okay, so Doden, thank you.
Got to get Frank on the books.
You guys sound a bit alike. If you're, if you're ready, I'll, I'll call it, or you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Doden?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Read.
Yes. That's it. We're done. Uh, hey, before you guys leave, what's the plan for the existing building?
For sale.
For sale. All right.
And you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting now.
Yeah. It's a whole lot to get better.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna replat first. Short and sweet.
Which one is that one?
Okay.
That parking lots are not to be in the front, on the front property. However, there is no possible location off of East Enin. There's like 56 feet of frontage off of East Enin. And we actually, Mike Hines went back and made sure that there were 150 feet of frontage on this other area, which will be facing Dayton Yells Springs Road. There just isn't any other way to do this. In order to fit the building the way it is, as you can tell, it's very, a very narrow piece of property butted up against that northwest corner. And for them to be able to expand in the future, there just wasn't another way that we could reconfigure this. So, I'll let the Cresco people talk a little bit more about the design, but what I'm asking for is a, an exemption to a couple of things. The parking spaces themselves, which they, I don't think they need to have, based on the size of the greenhouse, 90 parking spaces, it's just not necessary for their operation.
Because the parking regulation says whichever's larger square footage or number of employees.
Right.
And you have this big road facility.
Which, they don't have that many people in that part, correct. And the PUD allows for, you know, innovative and forward-thinking ideas for how to reduce impervious surfaces. And they just flat out don't need it. I mean, they have like 30, they have about 45 employees. I mean, they'll expand later and they're going to need some more, but right now, that's not what they need. And they don't need 90. So, and then also, I'm requesting an exemption to the parking being at the Dayton Yells Springs Road entrance because of that same reason, the design.
You want it facing Dayton Yells Springs, correct?
There just isn't, that's the only place where there's.
Well, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
The parking, yeah.
And that's as it showed.
Right.
With the fire department, and I think that Mark Philarama could probably talk about this more, with the requirement by the fire department's hoods with the, with the lane going all the way around the building and other things, I thought we could maybe just do some, some interesting things with screening. And that would not make it look, so, not make it look bad from Dayton Yells Springs Road.
Okay.
Well, we could just add more businesses up front.
That's true. There you go.
They could that way.
That'll cover it up too.
Add more business, you know, cover it up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So.
Anything else?
If they want to come up and say a couple words?
Yeah. You got anything else you want to contribute first Denise, or are you finished, you think, for now?
I just, I hope that everyone had an opportunity to see there, they did give reasons why they wanted the exemption for the parking.
Yeah.
Okay, if, if you're good, can we hear from the applicant? Please identify yourself for.
Mark Philarama, excuse me, Philarama Towns architect. We also have Charlie, founder and CEO of Cresco Labs, and Jeff from Choiceable Engineering, our civil engineer. And as she said, so it's a very difficult site, partly because of the regulations by the state, the 500-foot limit, and that's very, very funky, very narrow site. So, in terms of the site planning dictated by the building themselves, there's two portions, what she said, the headhouse, which is a factory portion, which is a permitted use of manufacturing. That's where they do the processing, and then you have the grow structure. And so that's dictated by, it's done by another manufacturer, Nexus. And so, with the narrowness of the site, north to south, this is really the layout. There's a hardship with the fire lane, future fire lanes, parking and everything, so I think we established that. I can answer any questions on why that is the way it is. So I think we laid out, and also this being off of Yells, Dayton Yells Springs, we tried to lay it out best we could, being friendly and neighborly, setting back the driveway, doing some planting. But there's certain areas where there's a bit, the right way for utilities, or I should say, for utilities that are set forth by Mike Hines. On the future fire lane to screen some of this is potentially going to be a problem in the future. So we'll do what we can through the screenings, as best we can, but there are a lot of things at play with utility easements in place along that whole southern portion that leads back. It doesn't go along the road, and I'm not sure you mentioned possibly in the future that it will be extended, but I'm not sure when that will be.
Hi.
Okay.
So any particular question, not anything else?
Yeah. Susan, you want to start?
Well, I had a question, and I think maybe you sort of brought it up earlier, about the, I think this is where there's this big retention pond. And, and I'm not an engineer, so you know, you have all this stuff about how the calculations were and so, and I'm sure it's right, but I wondered how it is, because it looked like you were using tin, was that, of how you calculate, or what are you using for the most amount of water that could possibly be there?
So first off, we've located that retention pond, and mostly we can find the building location of property backed up, kind of university, to the north side of the university. And that, what we originally, and there's going to be some final calculations, but Jeff is here, but that location there, the way it's sized on there, was looking at the phase one and some expansion. Mike Hines got back to us, I think, we don't have the full total survey yet, but I think we are open to locating that pond, and it might be reduced in size, and we'll be showing on the plan, and that will take care of the phase one. That's all we want to build. We don't know when, maybe ever be expanded, how far in the future that is, so obviously we want to keep costs low. We'll do the retention there. That may get smaller, because I think ideally, when it expands, knowing now the natural floor pad and the lot, we would be open to doing a secondary retention along the west. That might be better to disperse the water. Jeff's here, he could speak to that, but we haven't done all these calculations yet. But that would be our phase two. So what we're showing graphically for the location of the building, the driveway, the parking size, is what we would love to get conditional approval on.
Okay.
It doesn't. I think, I think what I'm wondering is, because I heard something today about when you're doing things like retention, when you're trying to do things for nature, things that will happen, and how we have tended to calculate it based on our past. But based on our past no longer works, because our climate has changed. And so we need to be looking forward of knowing that we have more moisture in the air, and so that's what my concern is. Are we basing this on past calculations, or are we looking forward, because we really need to, for your protection, to be looking at the worst-case scenarios? Because that's probably going to happen at some point.
Jeff from Choiceable Engineering, I think you bring up a great point, it's something that we actually kick around in our office among Muri engineers, regulations being here in Yells Springs or anywhere, may not be conservative enough for what we're starting to see in the weather patterns and the weather patterns going forward. That's probably another discussion for another day, but our calculations meet the requirements. There's also a little bit of conservative factors built into that, because engineers are a conservative bunch by nature. That this particular pond being where it is, with the flow in the road, it's going to head across the farmer's field and head to the north. So, really what, what the land is doing today is, is heading to the north. So, we have some factor safety built in above the village's requirement. That being said, we don't have a significant amount built in, because our clients don't want us to spend any more of their money than is necessary to meet the village's requirement. So, I don't know if that answers your question or not. We, we look at, we look at it to make sure if there's a larger storm than the village requirements dictate what happens to that, and that it doesn't hurt the Cresco facility or the neighbors. So should we take that into consideration when we're putting our calculations together? Does that answer?
Well, it does, and it may be the issue of the village needs to maybe look at what their standards are. Because I, I sort of assumed that you were looking at what the standards are for the village.
That's correct.
And, and I realize that no one wants to spend more money on something than they have to, but we also know that, that if something catastrophic happens, you will lose more money than you ever thought you would. So that's why, and we're the planning commission, and so we're actually, should be looking towards not having things like that happen.
We've actually, within the last six months to a year, been recommending our clients that we, our villagers, civil engineer, actually look at those relations and start planning for this, this different weather pattern that we're seeing. So we've been having a lot of this conversation.
Yeah, I mean, the Dayton Airport had three and a half inches of rain last Sunday. We didn't get quite that much, but we got a bunch.
We, we had a couple of clients that were over by.
Yeah.
Well, it's a report that you may have heard on NPR this morning, that Houston has had three 500-year floods.
In a row.
In the last year and a half or something.
So, but, but conceptually, what you're trying to do is you're trying to design a drainage system that, that behaves like the current one.
That's correct.
So they're trying to make the buildings look invisible.
Yeah.
From a stormwater.
From a stormwater standpoint. Richard, if you're going to talk, you got to come, you have to come in.
If you'd like me to.
Well, we're going to have a comment period, you want to?
Well, I just, listen, I'm not, it's not a personal comment, it's just a clarification of how detention and retention systems work. And why storm event, extreme storm events don't actually modify what you're, what you're trying to accomplish.
Right.
With the process.
Johnny, do you want to address this from the village's standpoint?
I can.
Okay. Let me put you on the spot.
This lot actually drains three different ways. I had this conversation with Mike Hines, and there's a ridge down the center of the lot on the north end that actually drains east-west, which is, to the east is the detention pond I've been talking about. The forward part of the lot, the south part, actually drains to the southeast a little bit. And so, the part that's along the back drains north towards Clem Farms additional field. So there, there's a lot of different drainage going on here, and it will probably, as it develops, take multiple ponds too, just because they all drain in different directions. But that's why the smaller pond will probably be fine for what Cresco wants to do now.
Yeah, okay. Would you change the configuration of your parking lot if you did a smaller pond?
The main entrance of the building is to the south, and so with the DA and everything, we'd like to locate it and have that location for them operationally. And I think just the way the configuration of the site is, I'm kind of glancing over and looking at it there, it's just, that's the best location for the parking, both from an operational standpoint and layout standpoint for this peculiar configuration to have. So I mean, I would look at it, but I have studied it when some of the concerns are brought up to us, and it's, it's a really difficult task.
You know, that's a concern I have, as they expand the operation, they, maybe they're, if the smaller retention, they could do more on that east side.
They were trying to, trying to keep it open for the future expansion. Hopefully everybody does well on their expansion. Just, just a point to the code, I think you brought it up. We're taking occupancy off the Ohio State Building Code, the IBC basically, and the building being expanded, the greenhouse, we're just adding the occupancy and extensions in there. And so what we've provided at the request of Denise is a letter, their, their potential employees or projected employees, and they run three facilities right now in Illinois just similar to this, is 15 to 20 people.
At full build out? At full build out, or?
No, at this.
At this, at phase one.
And just so you know, when, even when the expansion's done, it doesn't double, triple based on square footage. They add cultivation portion of it, it's just a small number of employees. So they attach a chart to that, but we have more parking that's really feasible, and we didn't even plan to end future reserved parking areas, so.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Susan, any more questions?
I don't think so.
How about you Frank?
Not right now.
Jerry?
All right. Well, I've got a list, so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
It's my understanding on the parking piece of this too, because the, the state is requiring restricted access to the building, it's not as if you're going to have much traffic coming in, because people have to call and make an appointment, they have to be on a list. So it's not as if you have to have a significant amount of overflow parking at all.
And I'll, I'll speak for Charlie on this, and let me know if it's wrong, but absolutely correct. This is not an open facility where you can enter, somebody, there's a gate, there's a fence around it, it's highly secure. The state requires that anybody that goes in there, whether it be to work or a visitor, they have to give that information, check with the state, it's verified by the state and it's approved by the state. Really, it's just employees going there, and it's very limited, very limited access to them.
And your fence goes around the entire property, okay? Because I know it's that.
Actually pushed the fence out so they could add one greenhouse, but.
Okay.
When they need it, so we prepared for that.
And you have a gate that closes, opens to let a car in?
So there's a rolling gate, so if you pull up to a call box, there's a camera, you check in, your name is already, if you were calling in or you're an employee, you have a card to go out, it's a gravity actuated thing. The entry gate for the fire department will be a horn activated for emergency, to lift the gate. One thing, and it's my fault, I'll take responsibility, I put a standard kind of boilerplate fence specification under that barbed wire, she mentioned it to me, we'll certainly take that off. I think there's also, you'd like to see the chain link fence black, that's, that's.
Yeah. So that's not a state requirement, having that off?
No, no, that was my mistake.
Okay.
That, my mistake. I don't think even Cresco does the horn warning typically on their other facilities anyway.
Okay. Well, we're still talking about parking. I don't know, we spent a lot of time talking about parking. Again, I made the comment before about the fire station. I mean, hopefully you're going to hire some people from town, bike rack would be nice. If you've got a tee pad to punch in.
I don't think Charlie has an issue with that from Cresco. We could certainly do that.
Okay, so now I have some other ones. Odor control. What is done about odor control?
Okay, so in the manufacturing, or what they call in the industry the processing headhouse, that's the pre-cast portion, where there's dry rooms, processing areas, those are all on RTUs and use a carbon-integrated filter system on that. And for the greenhouse, it's all automated, if there's a control system, but when those exhaust fans open up, prior to the opening of the exhaust fan, there's a odor suppression ring that we misters, and to put this in the easiest terms, there's different companies, but it's almost like a FIBRE system. So prior to that, levers opening up, that's, that starts misting. When the levers open up to release the air, it missed the air coming right out, and then it's on all the ventilation rings, our fans.
So it's big fans on the greenhouses.
Yeah.
And we, myself and Karen, made a visit out there, separate, Patty, separate occasions in both of the facilities, and we smelt nothing. It was just like, matter of fact, it was smelt better in around here. Farm fields and stuff.
More.
There's no, no smell at all.
Second question, note there's a glass roof. Is there going to be straight light at nighttime?
So it's a diffused glass, so it's not clear. And at night, when the lights are in operation, again, there's all different periods of the plant growth that they have it on, 12 hours here, whatever, at night, it's an automated system, they have a blackout shade system, that because there's times where they want their plants to be in complete blackout eaten during the day, so that's cold, that would be cold in that correct.
Okay.
We also saw this in operation, and it's like, I mean, it's, it's like two layers of curtain that cover.
Yeah.
It blacks it out.
It blacks it out.
Because we were in, we were in this frightening level of daytime.
And it's key operationally that they do that. So it really is a nice system. There's two shades, there's a diffusing shade, which is used at certain times when there's a blackout shade.
Johnny actually has a picture of the one.
Well, I know that, I mean, Patty, you've probably heard the same, I mean, one of the concerns I've heard personally about this is, is you're going to have a, a clear roof or a, a glass roof, and you're going to have this, you know, the Twin Towers lights shining up into heaven, you know, and.
If it was open from the airlines, you would see it. I just want to point out, so a lot, there's a lot of misconceptions. The greenhouse structure that they use is not a typical greenhouse structure. It's a sandwich panel system, so there's a rib siding system, it's actually insulated, and that goes up to 14, on the gate, 14 feet on the cross side, and then on the gable ends it goes a little higher. So you can't see in the building. It's a steel-sized building, it's got a glass, a diffuse glass roof, and top, here they give the lights.
It's like a tower.
Yeah. It really is like a Butler-style steel building with a glass roof.
So that's the roof, the white comes across and the wood is completely blacked out.
Most of your photo energy for growing come from the lights or from the sun?
Well, that's, in the industry, you would speak to it, we prefer that.
Okay.
From the sun, so.
Thank you.
So that's why you do have a glass roof.
Absolutely. So when the sun is available, we utilize that, but we have, the facility's outfitted with supplemental lighting. As Mark was saying, sometimes you need 20 hours of light, so even in the longest day, we need that supplemental light to kick on when the sun goes down, so we have 20 hours of growth. And then in the summer, there's a period of growth also where the max we can have is 12. So on a summer day, that's 16 hours long, we need to be able to shut out the sunlight completely after 12 hours and create total darkness, and that's why we have those blackout shade capabilities. So at night, if we ever need to have the light on, we have the blackout shades, turn the lights on inside, and we like it. If you didn't, to your point, it would shine like a beacon. It absolutely would, there's a lot of light power.
And it's more of a, honestly, I've seen some facilities where they didn't have blackout shades on it. It's more of a glowing, it's not a glare, it's.
Because you don't want to lose that.
Yeah.
So, so when you're running your lights at night, you're going to close these shades?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's all automated, it's computerized, so they have set points.
You push the button, and I think it takes 45 seconds for the blackout shades to come over.
Okay. So a person down the road is not going to see this?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Okay. Uh, let's see, we talked about. Denise talked about some screening landscaping, have you had internal conversations about that?
We have, and we, we have a schematic landscape plan for the parking plan that I haven't been addressing, screenings, we'll certainly study it. Like I said, along, if you see on the, on the south side where it kind of curves, and that funky curve came because of this 500-foot state regulation from, from the church, there's a tight squeeze there, and so there's a utility easement. Then there's also a location we left for the future expansion, and then talked to the fire chief, he wants to take the fire loop around. Right now, we don't have to do that, so I just kept the trees out there for all these reasons.
Well, I know that Denise was talking about screening up against the building, this, the model.
It can be back from the building, that just hides the stands.
Yeah.
It can be, I mean, it can sit, definitely sit back a ways, but just, yeah, and there's some ideas for that.
The front of those, the trees in front of the pan, but I'll certainly.
Yeah. Which is down the road.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure this will come up, but I was wondering. The lights on the buildings are all down lights, security lights, LED, we're actually, we don't have the full photometric, but Jeff has provided the photometric for the, for the parking. We have short poles, I'll address that, I don't question the last one. Like the Aggie University, those real high poles with the high bay lights, these are 22 feet, is that right?
20.
20 feet. And he's got the photometric, it's on, I think, the very last sheet, and it's all contained on our site.
Yeah.
And then the lights in the building themselves, because there's a bunch of security cameras, they're all projecting down, they're on the photometric for that, but nothing projects past the lot line at all.
So this is going to be in operation 24 hours a day? You're going to have 24 hours a day staffing?
We do have one sheet now.
We run to the door at 3:00.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll give Denise the cut sheets on the lights when we have them, so I can both of the wall mounted and the pole mounted.
Okay. Susan, anything else?
I don't think so, no.
Frank?
No.
Mr. Sims?
Yes, I was trying to get, get my bearing, I was looking at, that the, shows the front, south, south front, north rear. Is south-facing Dayton Yells Springs?
Yeah.
So.
So is your manager.
So, the thing, and I'm, I don't know what page I'm.
Yeah, so here, I'll describe.
Yes, because I'm looking at the fans and everything, appear to be facing.
So this, like if you're driving in, this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I could shoot over a little photo, axon metric, I have a 2D model on it, but so how this, this is called a bale-style greenhouse, is what they use in the industry, and it, you have gable ends, you see a long gable ends, and there, it draws air into what's called a central row, and it pulls that air in, and then it pulls it through the greenhouse and it vents it out those sides. So I know Denise asked, can you turn this, it doesn't work on this side, otherwise it would work.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I can tell that we're either headed with it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And those fans aren't as loud as the air conditioning unit?
I can get, I have to ask, this is Nexus Corporation out of Colorado, ask them what the sound is, but I've been out there looking, and Charlie, you've been out there looking. Those are just big, huge ventilation things that can have a drag. It's not a huge motor, it's a tiny little motor with a big prop.
They run faster than.
Yeah, they were running, they were running when we were there, and they weren't.
It's not, and each, in my experience, and Charlie could probably attest to this, they all go on at once. You'll have one, each one of those gables is a different row zone, and they're all set for different parameters, so you'll see a bank of three go on, each, each bale or gable end has three fans on it. And you'll see some come on, and then periodically, some others will come on, but I've never, honestly, and I'm being honest, I've never noticed that it was very loud at all. It's not a motor sound, it's, you're hearing the wind, basically.
Yeah.
I can get a cut sheet for you.
Well, the Viroflight fans.
Yeah.
They can be pretty loud, when you're standing right by them, but.
Well.
But no one's going to be standing right by them, right? Because you've got a fence around the place.
How far back is that, the actual building front edge from?
From Dayton Yells Springs, I mean, 12, 13 feet back.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a little nice thing about that.
Yes.
Yep, correct.
And hopefully, assuming there's other buildings going in there, that building is going to, at some point, going to be concealed from, from the public, really.
Yeah, we hope so. Okay, any more questions? All right, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, Rose.
I have.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Johnny, remember we were out there, there was one, there was concern about, there was some equipment sitting outside, and that's, that's been covered the year.
I believe it's in the rear.
Rear.
All the, all the. Yeah, all the, all the RTUs, the rooftop units are going to be on the headhouse, and I have a note on, from our MVP engineer on the despatch and everything, it meets all the current codes, it's not on the lot. current codes, not on the light line.
Jerry, one thing I'll say is, is we was under the impression that it was about a pre-cast, and that's the one we looked at, with the foam on, solid, that all that ducts.
Right.
The pre-cast is all.
Got you, okay.
You got the headhouse that looks like Go Yet, and then the greenhouses like you saw down in.
Got you.
And part of the reason we went with the pre-cast, it's a nicer building, it speaks the energy code, they're insulated panels. It's for, one of the most important reasons is to mount the RTUs up top, because that other structure is lighter, becomes difficult, some.
Got you.
Some of their competitors locate them on grade, and they, it's difficult to fit in there, especially on this site, because it's, it's got a supportive issue, and why we went in that direction. Something better for everyone.
Okay. Okay. Well, Rose, you have any questions?
Where are we in the?
So we are getting ready to open the public hearing.
On the?
On the last item on our agenda.
Wow, you guys are very efficient.
So there's no more questions for the applicant? Do you have any, Denise, Chris? Open the public hearing, this is time, if you have any comments about this application, feel free to step forward and identify yourself and. Richard, you were saying something earlier?
No, that was just to clarify on what happened to the detention.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I guess I do. Can I ask you a question?
We're going to close the public hearing first, and then we'll come back. Council members? Council member, have any comments?
We love it.
Okay.
You guys are asking good questions, we appreciate that, and we're looking forward to this business learning, maybe Friday or Monday, taking the license.
Wow.
Okay. Okay.
So thank you guys.
So with that, we'll close the public hearing. Further discussion, Rose, you have a question?
I guess, please tell me now if you've already talked about this, but the, when you talk about the site restrictions, right, I guess I don't understand, like, the lot is larger than what y'all are going to be using. Is, what was the reasoning behind, what's the per, yeah, sorry.
You want to know why the lot looks like it does?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There's a 500-foot restriction, they have to be 500 feet away from any house of worship, K through 12 education recreational facility. So this lot configuration allows Cresco to be in the back portion of the lot and need that 500-foot setback from the church that's up front.
Okay.
I don't think anybody would lay civil engineer, whatever, with like a nice easy lot.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a church there.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, well, then I think we probably need to entertain a motion to act on this.
Let's just.
And, okay, so yeah, Denise has her staff language that she's put together for us that includes a final legal description of property, the revised stormwater management plan approved by the village engineer, the revised landscaping plan, showing the additional plantings, and I would say also screening with there, too. I think at some time, that's.
In that architectural review report, I mean, I want to talk to them about screening, what we can do.
Yeah, and I think that they could just work that out with you, I would say. And then the other one was, and a plan for implementing the recommendations of the architectural review plan, that's what Denise says.
Screening.
Okay. And then what else do we have? We had, we were.
Exemption on the front parking.
Providing them an exemption on the frontward facing parking and the number of spaces with the inclusion of a bike rack.
So having this front parking, the loading area being in the front, too.
Okay. Denise, that's taking care of us here.
And I want, I wanted to specifically say there would be a black chain link fence.
If they follow the architectural review recommendation, yes, it will be.
So Denise provided this line, which was for being a plan for implementing the recommendations of the architectural review committee, which included the screening and the black fence without barbed wire.
Right, okay. We got burned out on one, I don't want to get knocked today.
Yeah. Well. Susan, Frank, Rose, are you okay with that?
Yes. So you've virtually, basically made the motion.
No.
No.
No. Do we need any more, is anything else that needs to be included?
Do you need to specify the number of parking spaces, the number fewer that you're recommending, or is that Denise's bailiwick?
Well, I mean, I think I put my report, and if you calculate it based on the square foot, which is the greater, it was like 90 spaces.
And you were approving 45?
45.
Right.
Did you want to be specific, or just leave it as your recommendation?
Yeah, just.
Okay.
Frank, anything you want to add? Jerry?
No.
Judy, you want to have something to read back to us?
So somebody is going to move approval of the conditional use and site plan review, allowing for an exemption of the front yard parking requirement and loading area, and the number of parking spaces with the following conditions: a legal description of the property, a revised stormwater management plan approved by the village's engineer, a revised landscaping plan showing additional tree plantings, and a plan for implementing the recommendations of the architectural review committee, including screening and black chain link fence sands barbed wire.
And the inclusion of a bike rack.
And a bike rack.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to accept this?
So move.
Do you have a second? Frank seconded.
All right.
Call the roll.
Doden.
Yes.
Pelzal.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Sims?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes. Good luck on the, with the state. Next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business? Next item on the agenda after old business is new business. Do we have any new business?
Just let everyone know that we're going to have a conditional use hearing in December for the Yolke Springs Brewery. It's, they're changing, they're going to do another location over at the bowling alley.
Oh.
And so we're going to, because we have those plans and what's.
And so that will be December, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if you know enough, but I'm an employee of the brewery, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
You might have to.
You'll have to refuse yourself.
My employment is about five hours a month, but.
He's permitted to, because what I was reading about council, he can sit and be a part of the discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
He just can't vote, is that right?
Well, it depends, I mean, he's only working five hours a month, I don't think he should be.
I mean.
No, he should not be able to vote.
Okay.
Can he sit at the table?
But I know for council, for the Airbnb, that said that the council members could stay there for the discussion, but they couldn't vote.
He should not even sit at the table, right?
He shouldn't sit. He can't just play delivery.
I just want to make a comment as a public citizen, but not vote, participate, deliver.
Wow, he's missing his second meeting. Okay. If that's the case, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Thank you very much, everyone.